I'd like to call the meeting to order. Town of Winslow, Maine, town council meeting, Monday, April 12th at 6:00 PM. The first order of business is a public hearing this evening. It's a public hearing on Order Number 12-2021. That's Town Council in order, providing for approval of the Town of Winslow 2021-2022 fiscal budget series in the amount of $26 million, $596,924, and to establish a tax due date and interest rates on the tax remaining on. Is there anybody in the public that would like to have their voices heard at this time? I believe Ken Fletcher, are you on? Can you unmute, please?
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Yep, and Ken, like all public hearings, you have 10 minutes.
Well, hopefully I won't take more than a couple. I'm Ken Fletcher, I live at 382,000 Winslow. And I just want to say I appreciate the information in getting the budget on the website. So we had a chance to at least look at it over the weekends, and I appreciate what Erica has been doing and answering a couple of questions. So I think I understand what's there now, and I think that one of the things, of course, I'm concerned with is that 2 bill brought in tax increases. I think we really got to understand the impact, but more importantly, I understand all the thinking behind it. And from what I have learned from Erica, actually, what we're planning to do, the budget plans to put approximately 1.2 million into fund balance, and that's to raise it up from where we have been up to a higher level. I think Erica said 16.6%. So that, to me, was a key piece of information. The other piece is thinking ahead to when we actually do sell the Orion Building. I understand there's about $1.8 million of funds that will be coming to the town, and I was just trying to understand where that is accounted for in the budget. And from what I now understand, actually, it's accounted for, but it's not in the proposed as far as expenditures. $900,000 of that is going to be directed into fund balance, and the other $900,000 is going to be put into streets. And, you know, I would just suggest that we try to make that as clear as possible because, you know, I think people just need to know that there is this other process, which may be fine, I'm not saying anything wrong, but that $1.8 million is going back into the budget, but it's not going to show on what this 26.609 million is. And I apologize, but that's where I am, and thank you for the information. It has helped me understand it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ken. Is there any other public comment right now at the public hearing portion on Order Number If there is no further public comment during this public hearing on Order Number 12-2021, I'll open up the meeting, please, with a roll call. Lisa, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, you can. Peter Drappo.
Here.
Jerry Keryan.
Yeah.
Joseph Gravell.
Yeah.
Jeff West.
Yes.
Ray Karen.
Here.
It's noted that Ben Twitchell and Lee, I'm sorry, Lee Trahan is here by Zoom. Ben is not with us tonight. Are you there, Lee?
Yes, I am.
Yay, thank you.
If we could now rise and recite the Fledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands for one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Can I have a motion for approval of the minutes of March 8th, 2021, and March 23rd, 2021? Seconded motion by Jeff West, seconded by Jerry Keryan. Can I have a roll call vote, please, for approval of the minutes?
Yes. Peter Drappo.
Yes.
Jerry Keryan.
Yes.
Joseph Gravell.
Yes.
Jeff West.
Yes.
Lee Trahan.
Yes.
And Ray Karen.
Yes.
Passes 6-0.
Communications, a letter from the Maine DOT, Waterville, Winslow, Tyconic Bridge, Number 2854. Erica, could you comment on that, please?
Sure. This is a public hearing, so what MDOT is looking for is feedback on how the construction project will go. Are we going to be in favor of, for instance, our traffic flow? Are we more in favor of shutting the whole thing down and making everyone reroute around and having it be a shorter project, or doing one lane of traffic in each direction and having it be a somewhat longer project? Again, the initial information they gave us was that shutting the bridge down completely could cut six months or more off the project, so it could be done a little faster. Other things that we may wish to comment on would be what we would like to see the bridge look like when it's done. Are we interested in having something a little nicer than just a functional bridge that gets people from point A to point B? Or do we want to collaborate with Waterville and come up with something that's a little bit more of a gateway between the two cities, which is kind of what I'm in favor of and what the mid-main chamber's been kind of pushing at? So basically, right now, they're doing the same thing that they've done with other recent public hearings for the state. We will be able to enter comment, but it's virtually. So basically, we're sending in written comment. They will compile that with the rest of the public comments. I just wanted to kind of pull everybody's comments together and try to be one cohesive message, instead of all of us trying to put in public comments individually. So mostly just be thinking about any concerns you might have with how that project's going to go, how long it's going to take, what it's going to look like. Anything else? Is it going to impact one group unduly over another as far as, you know, we need to look at public safety? How are they going to operate if we completely shut the bridge down? And I will be talking to our two chiefs as well at the department head meeting this week. So those are all just things to be think of. So if you've got comments that you would like to have included, like to have incorporated, please just let me know. I will try to pull together something that's cohesive for all of us. It's not formal. We don't need a vote on it or anything. This is just comments that we would like to get out there on the record for how they conduct this project going forward.
And you can go online. The public hearing is online right now, so you can go online and actually comment online if you'd like to.
It is open. And if anyone would like to do their own comment independent, and you don't have the link, I did send it out to everybody, but if you don't have it, just touch base with me, and I'll get it back out to you again.
Are you going to be available, say, Wednesday in the morning?
That's a good question. I don't know if I'm available, like, any day of my life in the morning. I could tell you real quick, Jerry. This Wednesday, I have a 10 o'clock and a 1 o'clock, so if you were earlier than 10, or probably say after 11. Yeah, I could do that.
Okay, moving on. For boards and committee appointments, the planning board, Mark Ward, reappointment is in there. I don't know if Mark is in the audience right now. I don't believe he is. So do we need a roll call on that? We have a motion by Jerry, seconded by Joseph Gravell. Lisa can have a roll call for appointment of, reappointment of Mark Ward to the planning board, please?
Yes. Peter Drappo.
Yes.
Jerry Keryan.
Yes.
Joseph Gravell.
Yes.
Jeff West.
Yes.
Lee Trahan.
Yes.
And Ray Karen.
Yes.
Passes 6-0.
Next on communication, presentation from the Alphon Youth and Community Center, Become a Mentor Program. I believe Maria Coletti is in, is on, is online right now. Maria, are you there?
Yes, it's me and my counterpart, Julia Page. So we're going to share our screen here with the presentation.
Yes.
Yes.
Yep.
Okay. Hi, everyone. My name is Julia, and we are both the program coordinators of the new AYCC mentoring program over in Waterville. So what our program is, is we are serving the children who attend our after-school program through our ages, kindergarten through seventh grade, and we've created this program to provide these kids with mentors who need that one-on-one attention. And we're looking for volunteers from the community, and our commitment is one hour a week where you come into the after-school program, play games, put a smile on their faces, and join in on the fun of all while providing the support they need. We serve a large group of kids. They're coming from all over. We have kids from Waterville, Winslow, Oakland, and surrounding areas, and the whole purpose of this program is to promote positive self-esteem, relationship building, and social-emotional control. A lot of our kids are coming from more harder backgrounds, different socioeconomic statuses, foster care system and such, so they really just need an extra source of stability and support, because that's why we've created it and hoping to find mentors to help with that. So our mission, I'm just going to read out to you, is to develop a positive sense of self and others and increase youth's intrinsic interest in learning and achievement through dynamic mentoring relationships. So everything Julia just talked about. And then our goals are to create intentional relationships for our kids, help them build trust, friendship, and fun, increase their social confidence, self-esteem, self-efficacy, self-discipline, social-emotional control, and then academic success comes with being able to learn those skills as well. So the big question is, what do mentors do? They'll spend an hour a week for one year with the child from our after-school program, do activities like Julia said, be their friend. A lot of our kids just want to have an extra friend, someone who'll listen to them, whatever they want to talk about. Some of them talk about some really wild, random things, and they'll want to tell you about space, or, I don't know, something you just have no clue what they're talking about, the one specific sharp, or something like that. So that's always fun. They just need a stable companion and someone to look forward to seeing every week. So we're just looking for people who want to be that safe space for them. And that goes into with mentoring, understanding why it's beneficial and a needed program for both the mentor and the mentee. So for people that decide to volunteer with our program, you are really gaining a friend. They are younger, but they are teaching you about life, you're feeling, you're making a difference, positive impact within your community. We are offering in-person and virtual mentoring sessions, so this could be a great way to have, gain back that kind of human connection we've been missing out on the past year. It's also a way to learn and practice new interpersonal skills that can then relate back to your professional lives and everything personal outside of it. We're also offering eligibility for a discounted membership at the Alphon Youth Community Center for people to volunteer with us. So if you're trying to also get more back into the fitness side of things, this could be a great way to get involved with our facility in that response. And then also going towards the mentee, why it's important for them. It's also, once again, a great way for them to gain a friend. One out of three kids grow up without having a mentor in any capacity, so we're really trying to help close that gap and bring more support to kids so that they can have a more successful future. And it also is teaching them how to build positive relationships. So with all this being said, there's three ways that you could help us out. One, if this isn't interesting, or this sounds interesting to you, you could apply to be a mentor for our program as well. We are trying to start relationships in early May. We have 25 kids signed up so far, and we have 10 mentors, so we're trying to build to hit that 25 goal. If being a mentor yourself isn't an option right now, you don't have that time, then consider the people in your life that you know, that you might think make a great mentor and would really love the referral. And also that if you are not interested, or you don't know anyone, we'd really appreciate you help us spread the word about our program so we can make a better lasting impact in our community. And so thank you for your time. If anyone has any questions, feel free to reach out, and we can put our contact information into the chat as well.
Does any council have any questions at this time? No, thank you for presenting. It sounds like a very worthwhile program, and I hope the best of luck for you in the future with the program, and you get some mentors in there.
Thank you so much, and thank you for allowing us the time to speak.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Reports of committees and commissions. We'll start with the town manager report, please.
Hey, so as always, we're having these busy months and big meetings. Today is our first day back in the office. Pretty much everybody knows we were shut down for a positive COVID case. It's what we've been worried about for the last year, and it finally did happen. Fortunately, everybody's recovering from the affected employee, except for, she does have one member of the family who's fairly ill right now, but she herself is testing negative. The child is fine now, and all of us who were exposed in the office have tested negative, and many of us have been able to start getting our COVID vaccines. So one thing I would like to do, though, is recognize Linda Cody and her staff over at Waterville Finance Department. They were absolutely wonderful taking our vehicle registrations. They were short-staffed during part of that time, and they were busy themselves, and they just really stepped up and took the ball for us, and I really appreciate their help. Just a reminder, I mean, we're not out of the woods on this yet, folks. We still got big numbers coming back, and spring break is making it increase even more. A lot of the new cases coming in right now from the younger folks, so please continue to be vigilant. I also wanted to recognize Judy Mathau and her role as the president of the Maine Chapter of the IAAO, which is the International Association of Assessing Officers. If none of you have ever heard of it, I have not. But Judy has created a program called Just Ask the Assessor, or the JATA Mentor Program, and it was created to assist new assessors who may have no prior training or experience in the field of municipal assessing, and she was written up in the last newsletter from the MMA. So I wanted to say congratulations to Judy. Well done. Yes.
Thank you very much, Judy.
Budget preparation is done, so tonight we get to present the final budget and vote on it. I know we're all looking forward to that, and I just want to thank everybody who's had a hand in that, from the school, for making efforts to minimize their increases and impact on the budget. And I want to thank my staff for the compromises they've made. They've had to spend a lot of nights in meetings and take a lot of time away from family, and especially Tanya Gross. She has put in so many hours on this budget and away from her family, including time on weekends and holidays. And Tanya is a huge asset to our town, and we're very happy to have her. I'm not going to read through all of my report. You have it, but just to let you know a few things we're working on. The phone system upgrade, that's, again, because our phone system is out of date on, we've got a choice to upgrade the platform we currently have or move over to an hotel co-system. I can't do that until I have formal, a formal proposal from Consolidated Communications, so I'm still waiting on that, but it's in, the project's in the works. New town website, we have been interviewing, between Lisa and I, we've been interviewing web developers. We've gone with Ben Gurley, who's the one who does our current website. We have talked to Matt Hunt, is it Hunt, over at A to Z Computing? And most recently, we had a presentation from a national firm called Revised. All of them, actually, A to Z is coming in the lowest as far as price, and Revised is the highest, but not by much. She's actually only a little bit above Ben Gurley, but the look and feel of their sites is very professional, very clean, and I think when we do this, we want to do it right. So we'll have a presentation for council on this probably next month, looking for how we might want to proceed forward. Again, we have to do this. Our website's broken. It's on an old platform we can't support, and we keep, having things just suddenly disappear, so.
It's horrible.
Got to be done. Not to mention, it's just probably the worst thing I've ever tried to find my way around it in my life. Comprehensive Plan, that committee is going to be reconvening on April 14th in advance of setting up the public hearing, so once we come out of that meeting on the 14th, we should know what the plan is to hold the public hearing for the Comprehensive Plan. It will be done virtually. KBCap is helping us with that. And coming right after that, we're also still working on the community survey. I did get a first draft from Central Maine Growth Council, and again, those questions are going to be aimed a little bit more at future development, a little bit more than the Comprehensive Plan was, and aimed primarily at business owners and some at residents and what they see as a successful community. Junior High Building, we have been having a lot of meetings. Tonight, you're going to, we're going to talk some about a proposal in executive session, but we're still looking to find partners for the building. We've had meetings with a daycare program that's already at the elementary school. We've had Maine Children's Home come through. They went and did a tour on March 27th and really liked the building. The problem is, nobody seems to want to step up and be the primary partner, so to speak. So we're still looking to see how that's going to work. KBCap is going to be the primary partner in that, and is looking at taking over the entire building, at least initially, and doing the renovations through, primarily through tax, historical tax credits. Then the other half of the building that is not going to be used, they're going to use theirs for the affordable housing, which will primarily be senior housing, and then that leaves the side with the gym and the auditorium for some other type of mixed use. So lot going on there. We're still looking to see if it's better than tearing it down, but I don't think any of us on the committee really want to see that. I think it's a waste of a building, given that we do need everything that that building could provide, and the fact that we can get money to do something, to build things and to renovate things, but it's really hard to raise money to just do a demolition. So more to come on that. And the food waste pilot, that will be launching on April 22nd, which is Earth Day. We're going to have to launch over at the library. We're going to have some kids come over from the elementary school, have some photo ops with the, with the media there, and we're also looking at bringing the high school on board, and we're definitely working with them so that we can expand the school program. Library's also pitched in on that. She's going to be having an educational event that evening on food recycling and how it works.
Great.
Property sales, just to let you know, we have sold our last tax-acquired property, so we are pretty much done with everything except for the Maple Ridge property, which has to go through the Maine Farmland Trust easement process, so that's going to take a while longer. And then the Orion Roadworks Building is still coming up to closing, which looks like it will probably be now at the end of April, April 30th.
Is that a date they've set, Erica?
That's the date they've asked for now, just based on some additional, you know, reviewing of the ordinances, trying to make sure that we get this contract zone amendment done. You know, obviously, they're spending a lot of money. They want to make sure that they're going to be able to actually build on the site and expand, so can't really blame them for trying to perform all their due diligence. Yeah, that's all I've got.
Great, that's enough. That's just the tip of the iceberg of what's going on, really, in the, in the last couple of months in the town of Winslow, so we appreciate everybody's effort. Go ahead, Jerry.
I had asked at the last meeting, have you talked with the school department to see there was any changes in their budget?
Peter is going to be coming in on this meeting after their board meeting, and he will let you know the latest on their budget.
Thank you.
What I'm going to do now is, normally during the COVID-19 pandemic, we've been having department heads give updates. I think we're, we're, we can stop doing that now, but I would like to ask, if there's any department head that has any issues that they would like to communicate to the public right now, you can feel free to chime in. There is one issue that I'd like to have Amanda McCaslin address, and it's in a positive thing. Amanda, can you give an update on the Fort Halifax down and what's going to happen there in the next couple of months?
Certainly. So we are, shingles were delivered today, and next week, we're going to be starting construction on replacing the roof to the fort. It should take about three to four weeks to replace everything, then it will be all set for the next 50 years.
Great, thank you very much, Amanda.
Amanda, what kind of shingles?
They're cedar custom-made shingles to be historically sound. The Historical Preservation Committee had to sign off on all the plans. We use a historical architect, so it will be kept.
Thank you.
Kind of the way it should be.
One of the things I might add is, during this project, this project has been 10 years in the making, I think at least 10 years, and it's been a long process, and to see it finally come to fruition is just, I think it's going to be really great, because at this point in time, the degradation of the interior of the building with the leaks, I think it would be very positive for the future in preserving landmark, historic landmark here in the town of Winslow. At this point in time, we're going to go to the public comment section of the meeting.
Can I have a first and second for the reports?
Yep. Okay. Can I have a motion to accept them, please? Jeff West, seconded by Jerry Keryan. Can I have a roll call vote on accepting report, please?
Thank you. Peter Drappo.
Yes.
Jerry Keryan. Joseph Gravell.
Yes.
Jeff West.
Yes.
Lee Trahan.
Yes.
And Ray Karen.
Yes.
Passes 6-0. Thank you.
Going into the public comment section, we have four letters that were presented or submitted to the town. The first one is from Kate Newkirk. Dear council members, I wish to voice my concern regarding the vote taken on Resolution Number 10-2021 that requested town support for a resolve that the US Congress initiate a revenue neutral free on carbon fuels, as submitted by Peter Garrett. The vote on this resolution failed by a 1 to 5 vote without, I feel, adequate public discussion. No council member voiced a concern either for or against the policy prior to the vote, nor gave a reason for their vote. Having worked in the climate science, I can say that the climate crisis is as real as COVID-19 crisis with much more dire consequences. Increase in carbon dioxide and methane in our atmosphere has changed our relatively steady-state weather pattern to increasingly variable weather patterns. Changing weather patterns are about one of the multiple symptoms of the current climate crisis. Increased drought and increased number and intensity of forest fires in the west, and increased numbers and severity of storms, including hurricanes, tropical storms, nor'easters, and tornadoes from Texas to the East Coast. These are all indications that climate change is here and now. This past year, there were 30 named tropical storms in the Atlantic and Caribbean, taking the naming convention well into Greek alphabet for the first time. Let us not forget that sea level is rising along the main coast, and the Bay of Fundy is the fastest warming portion of the Atlantic coast. Changing weather patterns are not just happening across the state. This is worldwide phenomenon, requiring both state and national worldwide response. What's the time? Okay. And I apologize, we have two minutes for public comment, and I don't mean to be disrespectful by cutting off some of the, but we have to put a time limit on some of these. During Peter's explanation at the council meeting on the March 8th, he did not comment on the environmental health effects the climate crisis is having on the world and abstinence of plants. In August 2018, I was working in Northern California after the outbreak of the car fire, and a week before the outbreak of the campfire that destroyed the town of Paradise, two towns east of the town where I had been working. It was disturbing to wake up in the morning to clean fallen ash on my car as opposed to snow, and to think that people and animals are breathing this ash-laden air for the days and months that the fire was raging around them. Thank you for, Kate, for that, for that letter. This letter is from Pauline Leach. Mrs. LaCroix, as a taxpayer in the town of Winslow, I would like to express opinions on the proposed increase in the town of Winslow tax rate. This is over, this is an over 11% increase in the tax rate. We are in the middle of a pandemic, and citizens are under a significant stress to pay their bills they already have. Many people in Winslow are retired or on fixed incomes. The increase in Social Security was paltry at 1.3%. This does not take into account the amount that Medicare increased. I am sure you know how many more people are looking for help with food and other necessities, and adding to this giant increase in taxes will not help. I am sure there are wish list items in the budget that could be deleted, and no one would really notice. I know this is your first year as town manager. I know this is your first year as town manager, and I don't feel you are helping the people of this town by going along with this atrocity. I feel like we had a fast one pulled on us because of the pandemic. Everyone has been staying at home with this deal was being put together, and most people are not aware of what was going on. Please read this to the council meeting if possible, as I am currently working seven days a week and not able to attend. The third letter is from James Moser. Councilors, we are heading into quite an economic storm. Tax hikes at this point will only be accelerant to an already raging inferno. In my house, when money is tight, we don't look over the neighbor's yard for things to pilfer. We make immediate cuts to expenditures in effort to avoid debt. During the March 31st meeting regarding tax hikes, Judy Matthews suggested that the tax rate is dependent upon your approved budget, the amount of money that you, the council, want to spend in the amount of anticipated revenue. Household budgets across town are going to have a considerable constricted tax flow due to the hyperinflation that will culminate in widespread depression. Simply put, as you contemplate digging deeper into Peter's pockets in an effort to palsade Paul, it is safe to say that resources are becoming necessarily scarce. Like it or not, cuts are inevitable, for what it's worth. And the last public comment tonight is from Stephen E. Chapman Jr. It's in reference to owner of 24 Marie Street, Winslow, Maine, in Dunbar Acres. Reference zone change request for tax map 13, lot 115, portions of lot 87, 88, 89, ordinance number 3-2021, and ordinance number 7-2020. I am making a no recommendation to the ordinance changes referenced above. I am not in favor of approval of the amendments identified above by the Town of Winslow Planning Board and Town Council. I am not alone in this position. Several abbotus, abutting owners have also expressed this disapproval. I am hopeful that since the town has rejected ordinance number 4-2020 and has deliberated and tabled ordinance 7-2020, that the Winslow Town Council members understand that ordinance number 03-2021 is not in the best interest of Dunbar Acres' community and should not be approved. I am concerned that Mr. Martin's request for a zoning change to mixed use does not fit into the requirement that this change exists in harmony with the character of Dunbar Acres. A commercial garage is different from homes, houses, residents that make up Dunbar Acres. I extracted a few items from the information provided from the abutis notice of public hearing for zoning, and there's a list of those here. Thank you very much, Steve, for your comments relating to 24 Marie Street. That's the end of the public comment section. Moving on to table business, order number 7-2020, an amendment to the Winslow zoning map to rezonate portion of a lot owned by CNL Real Estate on tax map 13, lot 115, from the high-density residential zone, HDR, to contract zone, high-density residential zone. The portion of this lot described as lots 87, 88, and 89 in Dunbar Acres and Dunbar Acres Annex subdivision, recorded in the Kennedy County deeds, September 22nd, 1961, in book 24, page 31. What is the?
Let's leave it tabled.
Second.
So we have a motion by Jerry to leave the table, seconded by Peter Drappo. To me, this, since they no longer own the land, I believe that the person in this order does not, ordinance does not own the land, I believe that why we, why would we keep it there? Why wouldn't we take it off the table and then just defeat it since it's no longer pertinent?
It carries over, does it not?
Carries over to the new property owner, and if we defeat it, and they want to reapply for something that is a contract zone, they're going to wait another year.
Okay.
Okay? So I would like to table both of these and wait from there.
Yeah, I was just going to ask, should we take both of these as one?
Yep.
One and two.
Yep, I'll just read ordinance number 3-2021, providing for an amendment to the Winslow zoning map to rezonate a portion of tax map 13, owned by Steve Martin. The portion is described as lots 87, 88, and 89 in Dunbar Acres and Dunbar Acres Annex subdivision, from the high-density residential to the mixed-use district. And I think the only way, while we can do this right, is if it's unanimous to put them together, because.
You can, you can do it anyway, yep.
Anyway, so we can put those two together. So we have, can, so.
Jerry and Peter.
Right now, the motion is for.
Do both.
Do both. So is that what the motion says right now?
That is fine, yep.
That's what the motion, seconded by Peter. Then can we have a roll call vote, please?
We can. Peter Drappo?
Yes.
Jerry Kirian?
Yes.
Joseph Gravel?
Yes.
Jeff West?
Yes.
Lee Trainhand?
Yes.
And Ray Karen?
Yes.
Passes 6-0 to remain tabled.
Yep. Still on the table business, ordinance number 4-2021, providing for an amendment to the Winslow medical marijuana ordinance to allow medical marijuana caregiver cultivation facilities in more areas of town. What's the pleasure of the council?
Second.
Yep.
That's to take it off the table?
Take it off the.
Take it off the table. Any discussion? If there's no discussion, can I have a roll call vote to take it off the table, please?
Yes. Peter Drappo?
Yes.
Jerry Kirian?
Yes.
Joseph Gravel?
Yes.
Jeff West?
Yes.
Lee Trainhand?
Yes.
6-0.
So it's off the table, now open for discussion?
Is this to do with the people on the Kusman Room?
Yes, yep. They're in low-density residential?
I'm all in favor of what they're trying to accomplish. My question would be, do they, are they handcuffed to just growing for medical marijuana, or can they grow for recreational as well?
I believe it's both. Is it?
Because it reads "medical."
The ordinance that we adjusted, I don't have the full packet, so I don't have to put them in front of me, but.
It was changed out to say it was added as facilities.
But the ordinance itself addressed medical marijuana, did it not?
No, not yet.
Yes, yeah.
Yep. Yes.
So this, this isn't going to address anything with commercial grows for recreational marijuana, because that's not what the ordinance was about.
Okay. I'm just asking, what, were they asking to just grow for medical?
Yes.
Okay.
Medical, they wanted to put a medical cultivating facility.
Okay.
So that's not a storefront, that's not selling there, it's just for.
As long as we're accommodating what they asked for.
Yep, and right now, as we all know, we've discussed this pretty thoroughly in the past, is that right now, medical marijuana cultivating facility is in just mixed use right now. And what they want to do, and recommendations also on the agricultural committee, was to expand that into rural and into low, low-density, low-density areas. So those are the two areas that we'll be expanding into, that we'll be expanding into that area.
Is there anybody from the planning board on?
Adam, what did the, what did the planning board decide on that?
It was, it was a 5 to 1 or 4 to 1 in favor of considering that an agricultural use would, which would expand, allowing the medical cultivation facilities into those districts.
Thank you.
Take a vote.
Take a vote. Any other further discussion? If there's no other further discussion, Lisa, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Some motion to approve?
Yes.
And is there a first and second on that?
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Peter Drappo?
Yes.
Jerry Kirian?
Yes.
Joseph Gravel?
Yes.
Jeff West?
Yes.
Lee Trainhand?
Yes.
And Ray Karen?
Yes.
First reading passes 6-0.
And I just want to say thank you, Adam, and the planning board, and the agricultural committee also, for their import into, into this subject and doing it in an expedient way. Going now to old, old business, ordinance number 2-2021, providing for an amendment to change the setback requirements for unattached accessory structures under 150 square feet by amending the zodin ordinance to include the unattached accessory structures under 150 square feet are not required to meet side and rear setback requirements as item L in section 14-61.
Second.
Motion to open by Jerry Kirian, seconded by Jeff West. Council discussion?
We discussed this before, and I agree with.
Adam's on, if anybody has any questions for Adam, he's on too.
Yep. We pretty much beat that law.
Yep, we did, we did. Okay, if there's no further discussion, Lisa, can we have a roll call vote, please?
We can. Peter Drappo?
Yes.
Jerry Kirian?
Yes.
Joseph Gravel?
Yes.
Jeff West?
Yes.
Lee Trainhand?
Yes.
And Ray Karen?
Yes.
Second reading passes 6-0.
Moving on, old business, order number 7-2021, providing for authorization for the town manager to sell property located at 3 Jack Street, Winslow, tax map 13, lot 33, for the amount of $4,699.92 to Duchy Bank National Trust.
Second.
Moved by Jerry, seconded by Joseph Gravel. Discussion? Erica, would you like to comment on that?
It's pretty self-explanatory. We're just voting to sell the property back to the previous owner, so that the, the mortgagee can proceed with foreclosure.
Motion to approve.
Okay, go ahead, roll call vote, please.
Peter Drappo?
Yes.
Jerry Kirian?
Yes.
Joseph Gravel?
Yes.
Jeff West?
Yes.
Lee Trainhand?
Yes.
And Ray Karen?
Yes.
Passes 6-0.
Yep, oh, sorry. Order number 8-2021, providing for the abatement of personal property taxes on accounts that have been deemed out of business or the tax god that has determined that the collection cost will be greater than the taxes to be collected.
Second.
Motion for Jeff, and seconded by Joseph Gravel. And discussion? If no discussion, can we have a roll call vote, please, Lisa?
Yes. Peter Drappo?
Yes.
Jerry Kirian?
Yes.
Joseph Gravel?
Yes.
Jeff West?
Yes.
Lee Trainhand?
Yes.
And Ray Karen?
Yes.
Passes 6-0.
Order number 9-2021.
Chairman, can we take 9 and 10 together on this?
Yes, we can, yep. Order number 9-2021, providing for a qualified agricultural conservation easement with Russell T. and Diane M. Wheeler, legal owners of the Flying Pig Farms, with an address of 1013 Garland Road in the town of Winslow, Maine, will be granted for a period of 20 years. Order number 10-2021, providing for the town of Winslow to enter into a 20-year farm support agreement with Russell T. and Diane M. Wheeler, legal owners of the Flying Pig Farm, with an address of 1013 Garland Road in the town of Winslow. Motion to accept by Jeff West, seconded by Jerry Kirian. Any discussion? If no discussion, could we have a roll call vote, please, Lisa?
We can. Peter Drappo?
Yes.
Jerry Kirian?
Yes.
Joseph Gravel?
Yes.
Jeff West?
Yes.
Lee Trainhand?
Yes.
And Ray Karen?
Yes.
9 and 10 pass 6-0.
New business, order number 01-2021, providing for an amendment to chapter 2 administration of the town ordinance by adding the article 21, Town Forest.
Second.
Second.
Do you have that, do you have that, Lisa?
I think I have Jeff and then Peter.
Yep, Jeff and Jerry, I think.
Rocky.
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 Jeff and Rocky.
All wrong, thank you.
Any other, and no comment?
No.
If there's no comment?
Is there anything Amanda would like to add?
You can ask her.
Amanda, is there anything you'd like to add on that one?
Can you, you talk to me, I can't quite hear you, it's all muffled. Say that again.
Is there anything you want to add on ordinance number 1-2021?
Oh, not, I think I spoke to it a couple of months ago, but basically, we have that piece of property, we're not doing anything with it. We would really like to make it a recreational space. The agricultural, agricultural commission would oversee it and help manage the grants, and anything that happens down in there, obviously, would send it to the council as well. But it's kind of just saying that that will be a town forest, and that allows us to go for the Canopy Grant and, and funding for it.
And Amanda, just for the people listening, can you give us the location of the town forest and how many acres it does encompass?
Yes, I don't have it, I haven't looked it up. It's just around under 500 acres, is that correct, Rocky?
Yep, it's.
Well, plus.
Yeah.
And it's on the utter.
Alvin Road.
And it's off of the Alvin Road.
Both sides of the Alvin Road.
Yep. Thank you.
I'll jump.
Thank you very much. Any other further discussion? If there's no further discussion, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes. Peter Drappo?
Yes.
Jerry Kirian?
Yes.
Joseph Gravel?
Yes.
Jeff West?
Yes.
Lee Trainhand?
Yes.
6-0.
Moving on, ordinance number 5-2021, providing for an amendment to ordinance number 08-2016, personal rules and regulations for town employees by revising employee benefit section of the personal policy and regulation handbook and adding in earned paid, paid leave.
Second.
Jeff and Rocky?
Thank you.
And Erica, could you comment on this one, because this is in reference to a state law, right?
Yes, this is the new state law that's requiring that every employee be granted one hour of earned paid leave for every 40 hours that they work, where it applies to employees that never were considered under this before, such as certain part-time and contract employees. It also now applies to our per diems. Everybody who gets paid by the town is entitled for every 40 hours they work to one hour of paid time off. And that's, it, it doesn't apply to employees that, that their current earnings of paid leave supersede that. It's not intended to supplement our, our current vacation or anything like that, but for instance, if you've got a per diem firefighter, for every time they work 40 hours for us, they do have one hour of earned paid leave, which they can in fact have added to their check. They could call in today and say, I want to use an hour of my paid leave. We would add it to their check and take it out of their bank.
That includes a subcontractor as per diem that gets $10.99?
Yes.
You're kidding?
No.
Okay, state law.
Yes, and actually, Tanya and I didn't fully understand it until we went to a seminar on it, and had a labor lawyer explain it to us. It, it kind of floors me that that's what we're talking about, but yes.
No kidding? That's special. All right.
Okay, any other further discussion, please? If there's no other further discussion, Lisa, can we have a roll call vote?
Yes. Peter Drappo?
Yes.
Jerry Kirian?
Yes.
Joseph Gravel?
Yes.
Jeff West?
Yes.
Lee Trainhand?
Yes.
Passes, uh, sorry, Ray Karen.
Yes.
6-0.
Can I have a comment just for a second?
Sure.
If it was not state law, I would not vote for this. That's absolute foolishness. Okay, sorry, go ahead.
Ordinance number 6-2021, amendment to ordinance 04-2019, providing for an amendment providing for an amendment to the Winslow zoning map to rezone the entire lot owned by the town of Winslow on tax map ten, lot eighteen dash A Benton Avenue, from mixed-use zone MU to contract zone mixed-use. So, Jeff, and seconded by Peter Drappo. Any discussion? Okay, just go into a brief description, just so.
Is that the old one?
Yes, yes, yes.
This is the, the, it's going to affect the boundary between Johnny Seeds and the Orion Building. It does not affect the abutters to either side of the property. It's just where these two properties meet. Because once we remove the connector that's between those two buildings after the sale is complete, Johnny's is going to be their own entity, Orion Rope is their own entity, and under the current contract zone language, the way it's written, this would form a non-conforming property when we take the connector out. This change is strictly intended to allow for the two buildings that are already sitting there to still be in compliance exactly where they sit right now, just without a connector between them. It will not allow for either of them to build up to the abutting property lines, which I think was the big concern, was that we wouldn't have setbacks on the side. That is not the case. This language has nothing to do with the other abutters, just these two buildings. And that's, that was their big concern as far as Orion goes. With getting the sale done, if they wanted to make sure that that language was clear such that they would not be stuck in a situation where they had a non-conforming property and wouldn't be able to do any expansion at all.
Any other further questions? If there's no other further questions on that, Lisa, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Peter Drappo.
Yes.
Jerry Querian.
Yes.
Joseph Gravel.
Yes.
Jeff West.
Yes.
Lee Trainhand.
Yes.
Ray Karen.
Yes.
First reading passes six zero.
And order number eleven dash two thousand twenty-one, providing for authorization for the town manager to enter into a two-year PSAP foul handling agreement with Somerset County Communications Center. Motion by Jerry Kirian to accept with Jeff West second. Any discussion?
That's what we discussed, this fact.
Yep, yep. Yep, that's the dispatching.
No.
If there is no discussion, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Peter Drappo.
Yes.
Jerry Querian.
Yes.
Joseph Gravel.
Yes.
Jeff West.
Yes.
Lee Trainhand.
Yes.
Ray Karen.
Yes.
First reading passes six zero.
And moving on. Order number twelve dash two thousand twenty-one.
Yes. Should we skip this until we hear from Peter?
We can. Is, yeah, is Peter Tibbitard, are you on now, Peter? Not yet. Yep, we can, Jeff. So we'll move on. Order number thirteen dash two thousand twenty-one.
Order number fourteen. Oh, thirteen, yes.
I'm doing thirteen, please.
Yeah.
Are you okay now?
Yep.
Okay. Order number thirteen dash two thousand twenty-one, providing for amending order number twenty-five dash two thousand twenty, correction of the maximum term for the bond issue from thirty years to fifteen-year maximum term. So, so moved by Jeff, moved by Jeff, seconded by Jerry Kirian. Erica, could you explain that again with the sewer, sewer?
Oh, this is basically a technicality. The, this is for the bond we're taking for the Benton Avenue water and sewer project. Our, when we first did the bond acceptance notice, we wrote in there that the maximum term was thirty years. The maximum term on this type of bond is only fifteen years. Either way, we are only taking the bond for twelve months because we're using rural development funds. So we just need the bond long enough to get the rural development funding, and then it'll be paid off. So this is merely a, to correct the language so that it reads in conformance with the rules.
So, Erica.
Yes.
Is that just for sewer?
Yes, that's strictly for the Benton Avenue project, for our portion of that, which is Benton Avenue Stormwater.
You all set?
Yeah.
Okay. If no further discussion, Erica, could we have a roll call vote, please?
No, but Lisa will give you one.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah.
Peter Drappo.
I'm reading ahead.
Yes.
Jerry Querian.
Yes.
Joseph Gravel.
Yes.
Jeff West.
Yes.
Lee Trainhand.
Yes.
Ray Karen.
Yes.
First reading six zero.
Mr. Chairman, can we take fourteen and fifteen together, please?
Yep, we can. Order number fourteen dash two thousand twenty-one, providing for authorization for the public works director to purchase equipment to outfit seven pump stations with transfer switches and associated hardware to allow connections with the portable generator at a cost of twenty thousand dollars. Order number fifteen dash two thousand twenty-one, providing for authorization for a public works director to pay for the installation of the electrical transfer switch and accessories by a qualified electrical contractor for costs not to exceed forty thousand, with funds to be taken from the capital sewer.
So move.
Jerry Kirian, and seconded by Jeff West. Paul, would you like to comment on this? Just a general overview of it?
Sure. Sure. This is, this is something that's been in the works now for quite a few years. We finally got ourselves a full-size generator that can run all the pump stations. Right now, I only have one that's set up to be able to be operated by the generator. So this is a work in progress to get them all compatible so we can go from one station to the other. We also have a little bit of money left from the DPP grant we had last year that will help pay some of it. I'm using that money for equipment purchases so I don't get into David's bank in the wage rates if we actually use it to pay somebody. So this is what we're looking at. The other, we have nine stations in all. One of them has a standby generator. The other one's already set up for switches, so this would do all of them.
Is there any other further questions? If no further questions, Lisa, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Peter Drappo.
Yes.
Jerry Querian.
Yes.
Joseph Gravel.
Yes.
Jeff West.
Yes.
Lee Trainhand.
Yes.
Ray Karen.
Yes.
Fourteen and fifteen, first reading six zero.
Mr. Chairman, can we take thirteen through sixteen together, please? Yep. Or are you gonna hit me?
I'm not gonna hit you.
Okay.
Jeff, are you on the old agenda or the new agenda? My numbers don't coincide here.
I think.
Resolution number thirteen through sixteen.
The items?
Yes.
Not the item.
Looking at.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
No, go ahead. Yep, I got you now. Thank you.
Jeff, thirteen through sixteen, right?
Yeah, the next four.
Okay. Resolution number thirteen dash two thousand twenty-one, providing for authorization for the town manager to transfer sixteen thousand from the contingency account and transfer six thousand into sports track account and ten thousand into eighteen oh four schoolhouse account to replenish the expenses of a transfer for said accounts per resolution thirty-nine dash two thousand twenty. Resolution number fourteen dash two thousand twenty-one, providing for the authorization for the town manager to transfer the remaining balance of twelve thousand from the rescue replacement capital account into the municipal building capital account to be used to purchase heat pumps for the town office. Resolution number fifteen dash two thousand twenty-one, providing for authorization for the town manager to transfer the remaining balance of four thousand sixty dollars and ten cents from the recycle fund capital account to the fuel cap reserve capital account to be used toward maintenance on the fuel island located at the Public Works Department. Resolution number sixteen dash two thousand twenty-one, providing for authorization for the town manager to transfer the remaining balance of thirty-five thousand five hundred and ninety-seven and fifty-six cents from the industrial building capital account to the town garage capital account to be used toward maintenance of the Public Works Department.
So. Second.
So moved by Rocky, seconded by Jeff West. Any discussion?
We discussed all this during budgeting.
We did. If there's any questions, if there's no questions, then Lisa, can we have a roll call vote, please?
We can. Peter Drappo.
Yes.
Jerry Querian.
Yes.
Joseph Gravel.
Yes.
Jeff West.
Yes.
Lee Trainhand.
Yes.
Ray Karen.
Yes.
All pass six zero.
Mr. Chairman, one last time.
Yeah.
Can we take resolutions number seventeen, twenty, and twenty-one together, please?
Seventeen, twenty, twenty-one.
They're all poll.
Yeah.
Poll location permits.
And this is, you know, I'm just gonna read number seventeen, just for, providing for poll location permit, Central Main Power Company and Consolidated Communications Work Order. And then the other one is for, it's just again another poll, twenty and twenty-one is a poll.
They're all poll permits.
They're all poll permits.
Yeah.
Got a motion?
Motion?
Motion by Peter, seconded by Jerry Kirian. Any discussion?
Yes.
Go ahead, Jerry.
Okay, resolution seventeen is inside the compact on U.S. Route two oh one Augusta Road, which is ours, to issue a permit. On the resolution twenty, and I think twenty-five, I believe, not twenty, yeah, resol, not twenty-five, twenty-one. Those are outside, they're on U.S. two oh one Augusta Road. Those are outside our jurisdiction. They're basically DOTs, there's the licensing authority. Which are the, you know, outside the.
Then why are we applying for the permits and then granting the permits?
No, they haven't been granted the permits. Nobody checks these. See, I did this with one of my, uh, job descriptions for forty-six years, which basically states that if we issue a permit, it won't be illegal.
What's resolution to the situation?
Apparently, the utility, utilities asked us to issue the, correct, Lisa?
Correct. C and P sent them directly to us.
Okay.
Yeah.
Jerry, they would know.
Well, not necessarily. I've got them before, sending stuff to us which weren't ours. We sent them, we told them to apply to the town.
Who would they apply to if it's not to the town?
It'd be DOT, main department transportation, the region.
Now, which, which ordinances are good and which ordinances do you have question on all of them or on one particular one?
Two.
One, two?
Yes.
Which ones are those?
So, yes.
Twenty and twenty.
Twenty and twenty-one?
Yeah.
So twenty and twenty-one? Is that, is that just one reading or is it two?
They are one. They're resolutions.
They're resolutions, so.
Well. I don't want to contradict here, but I applied for a lot of poll permits in the day. And it depends on who owns the prop, who owns the right of way. Paul, are you there?
I have a message. Time to ask him to come back on. He's muted and his video's off, so.
There he is.
Yes, sir.
Paul, on these poll permits, have you got a, have you got a agenda in front of you?
Yes.
Okay, under resolution, resolution number twenty and twenty-one, Jerry thinks that these permits should be applied to, to the DOT and not the town.
Where's the compact?
If they're outside our compact zone, I agree. I don't think we're the ones issuing the permits.
Okay, do you know where the, I mean, do you know exactly where the compact zone is?
At the traffic brook, traffic brook.
Compact zone, yeah, compact zone is right at that pump station down, the first pump station down in the hole.
Okay.
The compact zone.
Well, none of these are ours.
Well, that's what I'm assuming.
Other than that, I have no idea where these permits are. I haven't seen the paperwork.
Are all of these permits to do with the two oh one project?
No.
No?
There's none.
The seventeen has to do with a repeater station. It's just an additional pole on the China Road.
Okay.
These are all on two oh one, I think.
Well, what do you suggest we do, Paul? Not, not vote on this? Just vote on the one on the China Road?
Depends where, where's the one on the China Road?
Not very far.
I haven't seen, I haven't seen this paperwork, so I don't know.
Well, one thing we do have is, I don't know if we can add to agenda tomorrow night, but we have a special town meeting tomorrow night. We can, Paul, can you look at seventeen, twenty, and twenty-one resolution and see if it is in our jurisdiction and make a recommendation to us tomorrow night?
I can do that.
Okay. Is that okay, Erica?
And Paul, can you find out? Uh, on those, right, who do they go to at DOT? It's re, I can't remember the region number.
I'll find out.
Okay, so, resolution seventeen is on two oh one.
Yep.
North of the Taylor Road.
No, not seventeen.
I'm reading it right here.
Okay.
So, yes, seventeen.
I thought the compact.
On Route two oh one, beginning at a point approximately nine hundred and fifty feet north of Taylor Road.
Yeah, that's twenty-one, right, Jeff?
No, that is seventeen.
Seventeen, what I have here is the starting from Cusman Road to China Road and Sebastian Road. But the China Road is Sebastian Road by Central Main Power. That's seventeen. Then I have for seventeen.
That's what I get, too.
Okay, the work order number, I'm reading right off the work order number.
Two of them have the same number, too. They, I want to see, three, nine, is it?
Yeah.
Yeah, but they're different.
Well. Paul, you're gonna look at seventeen, twenty, and twenty-one, right? And you're gonna make a recommendation to us for tomorrow night?
Yes.
We gotta make sure, obviously, that, you know, that we have the correct verbiage for seventeen, twenty, and twenty-one. I believe we do, but we can figure that out tomorrow. So. You want to table this? Table, we should table.
Okay, can we need a second?
Second.
Second.
Got it.
And this is the table, seventeen, twenty, and twenty-one.
Correct.
Yes.
So, any discussion on that? If there's no discussion, let's have a roll call vote for table in seventeen, twenty, and twenty-one for poll locations.
Peter Drappo.
Yes.
Jerry Querian.
Yes.
Joseph Gravel.
Yes.
Jeff West.
Yes.
Lee Trainhand. Isn't he a dear?
He's trying to say yes. He's muted.
You're muted? Yes.
Thank you. And Ray Karen.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Yes, yes.
I think so.
Yes.
We also have quite a delay on there.
Yeah.
Okay, moving on. Resolution number eighteen dash two thousand twenty-one, providing for authorization for the town manager to accept two thousand nine hundred and seventy-five dollars in state funding from the main state library for the Winslow Public Library. A motion?
Take a motion.
Rocky.
Second.
Second.
Seconded by Jeff West. Lisa, are you there? Lisa, Public Library?
Yes, sorry, my computer's being difficult. It's on here.
Just, just give us a little update on that, what that is going to be used for.
Oh, okay, what we're gonna do is put all-weather storage lockers outside a library under the cover to our entrance. And that way, we can, through a process, leave materials for people who can't get to the library before we close. So they'll have a combination, and they'll be able to then pick it up, their books, so their materials up after we're closed. What we're trying to do is expand our ability to serve our patrons. But, you know, people have crazy schedules, and a lot of times, they just can't get to us before we're closed. So we're trying to do something to help people, like, you know, they need a book, they need the book for a report they have to write over the weekend, but they can't get to the library before we close. So we check it out to them, we put them in the locker, we send them the combination, and they ride through at nine o'clock at night and we come pick up the books. So.
Great.
And we're not increasing staffing, we're not increasing hours, but we're increasing our ability to serve our patrons.
Great. Thank you very much, Lisa, for that explanation. Is there any other?
Thank you.
Any further discussion? If no further discussion, Lisa?
Peter Drappo.
Yes.
Jerry Querian.
Yes.
Joseph Gravel.
Yes.
Jeff West.
Yes.
Yes.
Lee Trankey.
Yes.
And Ray Carey.
Yes.
Passes six zero.
Resolution number nineteen dash two thousand twenty-one, providing for authorization for the town manager to apply for two, two thou, two hundred thousand, two hundred and ten thousand in community development block grant funds on behalf of Main Crisp. So.
Second.
Second.
You all set, Lisa?
I am.
Discussion?
So this is where Paul and Karen were coming in initially, and I see Mike there, too. So they have, Main Crisp has submitted a proposal that's going to bring on additional jobs. And as you may or may not know, Main Crisp moved over into their new, additional, I should say, correct, Karen and Steve, facility over here on Litgow Street in Winslow. So we are very excited to see them come over and to be able to expand. And Karen and Steve, maybe you could just tell us just the hot points, what this money's gonna be used for.
Sure, we'll keep it really brief, and Michael has joined us as well, and he's the owner of the property. So we make specialty crackers where the main ingredient is buckwheat out of Arista County from the Bouchardson Ford Kent. And we've been selling up and down the coast and into Massachusetts, and now we're expanding across the country. And so we've taken all the available space that we can get at Ten Row Road Square. We also have a warehouse in Bent, and we're delighted to find this warehouse that has needs in Winslow, which we can keep our local workforce, so we anticipate that we could hire twenty-five to thirty-five people over the next couple of years. And that by year three, we'll be purchasing over three hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of buckwheat out of Arista County, creating a new market for buckwheat. So we, the two pieces of this big project are, one is the equipment, and second is the facility upgrades that are necessary. And on the equipment side, our total equipment needs are three hundred and fourteen thousand dollars, of which we were thrilled to work with Erica for grant application to Community Economic Development. At least have the permission to apply for it. The other portion of that equipment, of that total three hundred and fourteen, is a loan from CEI for a hundred thousand dollars, which is already approved and in process. So this would get the equipment that we need to make this project happen, and now we're working on planning and blueprints. So this is for the equipment piece. Karen, you want to say?
No, we're just, we're just excited to expand and be under all in one roof and not to have to go very far. And like Steve said, we get to keep our workforce, which is really important to us.
You. Are you gonna be selling any cloaks? Which is the buckwheat for our pantry?
Are we selling it?
Or making it?
We talked about maybe a retail space there, but that wasn't, it's not something that is indefinite.
Any?
Thank you.
Yeah, it's great to have you expanding into the town of Winslow, we're just, we're than happy to have you here. Congratulations on your business and good luck in the future. Any way that we can help will be more than, will just come to us. And any free samples, please, we have a council meeting on the second Monday of every month, if something happens.
Right to go.
You know, we, we.
If I explain them, I might first describe them.
Okay, yeah, we can use it, use us as guinea pigs for that, for that project would be great.
Great.
Thank you, thank you very much.
What building are they going into?
Old school, the old old school building.
Thank you.
If there's no further discussion, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Peter Drapeau.
Yes.
Yes.
That would be Jerry, Joseph Gravel, Jeff West.
Yes.
Lee Trankey.
Yes.
There we go, and Ray Carey.
Yes.
Passes six zero.
And what we're going to do is, we're gonna take a few things out of order right now for discussion items. And the first one on the discussion item is replacing Howard Metta on the KRDA first part board. Erica, would you like to comment on that one?
Sure, Peter, I'm sorry, Howard contacted me last week to let me know that he was going to be resigning his post as our civilian representative, I guess I shouldn't use the term civilian, sorry, going back to my sheriff's office days, as a community representative on the KRDA first part board. Jerry is our council representative. Howard just has discovered he's got way too much on his plate and he can't continue to serve. So he, he's just given us advance notice that he'll be stepping aside. That means we need to try to find somebody else who can fill that slot on the board over there. So I don't know if, I just wanted to bring it up for discussion, so if any of you have somebody in mind or if there's somebody out there who might be interested in serving in that position, that we could hopefully get some of those names and start thinking about who we might put forward for that.
Yep, and it's one thing, you know, Howard has been a very civic minded person and has contributed to the town of Winslow, he was past council chair. So we thank Howard for his service in that capacity over the years, thank you very much, Howard. And like Erica said, anybody that's interested, give, give the town office a call and we'll consider that. And one of the things that, just before the meeting, we, for executive session, we had a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to one MSR, but by advice of council, that should be an open discussion at this point in time. And it's having to deal with the chief of police contract. Part of the discussion was that, due to housing in the, in the area, Chief McDade has had a hard time finding a place in the, I think it's a certain mileage that we require.
Fifteen miles?
Fifteen miles, so he is requesting, at this point, to remain at his residence in Newport. And there's also, in part of our discussion, is also that, and I'm gonna let Erica, he would be like to allow to retire, you go ahead.
We changed that back a while ago.
It's written into his current contract.
Oh, so the contract never got the change, so it's more of a typo than anything?
I don't know that it's a typo, my contract also says fifteen miles. I know that the chief, fire chief is different, but he hasn't asked for it, so.
Well, we had, we had also done it with the former police chief and tried to set that as a standard now, instead of fifteen miles. I think it was thirty, or thirty-five maybe. Whatever Ron's is, is what we changed everybody to, basically.
He's quite a distance out, mine's still fifteen, jeez, now you tell me, I could have bought a cherry piece of property over and rebuilt. Anyway.
But, one of the things is, over the years, that we, is for recruitment purposes, is that if we limited it to a radius of so many miles is that we're finding that people like to live, that coming in when we're hiring is like, they like to stay where they are or have more of a wide range, just, and it's very limiting when we go to hiring some of these, these, in the higher up positions and even lower positions to have that requirement.
We wouldn't have given you all the Georgia.
I mean, to get into the discussion part of this, yes, years ago, with landline telephones and the way things were, you wanted them to live in the community, then it was five miles, then it was ten miles. I mean, let's face it, with cell phones and communications the way they are, I don't see an issue with Chief McDade living, I believe it's actually in Palmyra, isn't it?
He's on the line.
He's on the line right now.
But, either or, I mean, I believe he's performed his duties just fine thus far. Living where he lives, he just built that house, so I was informed, it's a couple of years old, and it just, it's been a problem, so.
How, Chief McDade, how far are you crow fly?
Thirty-three miles.
I say we make it a thirty-five mile radius.
Second, if you're making that motion.
If I can make a motion on that.
Right now, we're just discussing.
It's just a discussion.
But because we didn't want to bring the chief's contract to you all until we had some kind of indication of how you all felt about doing this. The other part of the contract, that is the much bigger part that needs to be discussed, is the chief is wanting to retire and still work. That's been done, it's pretty common practice, is my understanding, the Waterville chief is doing it. I understand we've had a fire chief in the past who's done it.
Great.
Chief O'Barry had wanted to do it, but he ended up resigning altogether before that, and I guess.
Believe we have a, and Peter can correct me if I'm wrong, don't we have a assistant principal that's doing that right now? I just not paying attention to me.
It's common with state retirement, I have a few friends that do it. What happens is they're eligible after so many years, okay? If they don't start taking it when they're eligible for it, and they decide to work to a further age, they can never recoup that money, it doesn't tag on to the other end. When they, when they're eligible, they, either they start taking it, if they don't take it, they can't, they can never recoup it. I believe it's a savings to the town if this is approved, isn't it Erica?
So currently, we pay nine percent towards his retirement, that's what we pay on our payroll for pretty much everybody. He will get hit for five percent penalty by, it's ICMA, is it not chief, that yours is through, is it ICMA or Main Crisp?
Main Crisp.
Okay, so there's a five percent penalty for him doing this, that they will take out of his retirement or make him pay directly. If we pay five percent, it's still a savings to us, where we were paying nine percent, we would pay five percent and cover that for him, and that's the request to put into the new contract. So it's still a savings to the town, it's just not the full nine percent, but overall, it's a savings.
So we're saving four percent, four point five?
Yeah.
Yep.
And how much longer, Chief, how long are you gonna work for us?
Twenty years, as long as God let me.
Okay.
Yeah, at least ten years, I'm hoping.
Thank you.
So we'll have to have, we'll have to change the contract, you didn't approve the contract.
We would have to open up this contract, I'll have to coordinate with Bill Lee and make sure we've got everything right. We'll also, he has to apply for retirement, but there's a timing issue there, that's why we wanted to get this on the discussion sooner rather than later. And we certainly didn't want him to start going down that road if it was gonna be something that council wasn't amenable to consider, so.
Well, what we can do is show a hands, if you'd like to, why don't we, if, if we are remendable to, already is, first of all, we can do it by moving, by him staying thirty-five miles outside of town, just to show a hands of who's, who's okay with that. And then, about Lee, Lee?
Yes.
Okay, and then about the retirement, paying the five, four point five percent.
Perfect.
So, all in favor of that, so?
Lee?
Do you have a direction?
Lee?
Yes. We're in favor of it.
Okay.
Thank you. One more question on his retirement, nothing bad. Is there any other savings?
With him retiring?
Yes, how about medical?
Are you taking our medical, chief?
Yes, there's no medical attached to my retirement plan, they don't wanna give the medical, please, we're state leave.
So the only thing that we would really be saving, because he would still be an employee, it's just he's already able to collect his retirement. So he's still eligible to take our insurance programs and all of that, we'd still be paying for that. The part that goes away is the four percent of the insurance, I'm sorry, the retirement that we were paying in, so that's.
It's a win-win.
No, sir, no, sir, I'm very upset, okay, sounds good. Now, we have to go, before we enter into executive session, we have to go back to order number, I believe it was twelve dash two thousand twenty-one, providing for approval of the town of Winslow, two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two fiscal year budget series in the amount of twenty-six million, six hundred and nine hundred thousand, two hundred and fourteen dollars and forty-two cents to establish a tax due date, interest on tax remaining unpaid. And one of the things, one of the counselors wanted to know, do I have a motion to open that?
Yeah, so move.
Jeff, seconded by Peter. Peter, I see you're on, and you are going to give us an update on insurance and some other issues with the school.
Yeah, sorry, my mic was off earlier, when Jeff answered the question. Yes, so if we could just have a couple of moments to show you a few screens, if that's okay with all of you?
No problem, go ahead.
So what you're looking at right now is the, is the projected second draft that we had shown you earlier of our budget. So you see that the, on the top line, you see what the total request was at that particular time. And in that particular draft, we had told you that something that could change would be our insurance rates if they came in at a lower number. Of course, we budgeted ten percent, which was the highest amount, not knowing what they would be. When you saw this, we were, we had reduced it to five percent, knowing that the, that the highest it was gonna be was five percent. And since we've met with you, we were pleasantly surprised at our final rate, which came in at an incredible zero percent. That's huge for us. So what that means is, we had originally plugged in approximately a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in savings, if you look at the second line here, where it says cuts on insurance. We had, we had projected roughly a hundred and twenty-five thousand, and you can see that after the adjustments that were made, that was a savings of up for us, for two hundred and sixty-eight thousand, five hundred and sixty-three dollars and ninety-eight cents. So I had said to you before that each percent was about twenty-five thousand, but the dominos have already started. So when somebody leaves, somebody asks to be transferred into the position, so you get a different person in that position, may have a different salary rate, may have a different insurance rate, so those things change. So after doing all of the calculations, that was the number that we were able to, to come up with. That will change again as we, as we move forward, but that's where we stand right now. So as you work your way down through, you had seen all these numbers before, these are, these are the things that we had, were taken out of the budget and we wanted to find an alternative funding source in order to, to pay for these things, the accreditation for the high school, we had one more year on a computer lease, the irrigation wheels that we had talked about, the summer school. So these are all things that, that we have found, or we hope to find an alternative funding source for. And when I say hope to find, one of the things that we, that we hope to do is, as we watch the budget that we're in right now as we start to close out the year, will there be money left in this budget to be able to pay these things, to be able to purchase these things out? If not, then we would go to another funding source, which I had mentioned to you, which is called the Main Care Funding Source. But that's where we stand. So then at the bottom, where you'll see the adjustments, these adjustments changed a little bit because our gym teacher has retired, so the adjustments that you see there, it would be the savings if we hire somebody that is no more, that has no more than a five years experience with the masters. That's a gauge for us when we, when we start looking at advertising hiring people. The twenty-one thousand oh ninety-two were the additional art savings and startup costs, we had mentioned this to you before, this is one of the pieces where we wanted to extend the current art teacher's position to full time so that she could offer a digital art class to high school and middle school students, and a little bit of the other startup cost involved in that, gives you that twenty-one. We had some internal transfers already taken place to some of the savings between who was in that position, that's gonna that's gonna be retiring and an internal transfer has, has given us that savings. Of course, now you have to hire for the internal transfers, so in the end, it could be a wash, but that's where we stand now. And then the forty-two thousand dollars for the additional speech services is something that we desperately need in order to be compliant with the, with the law and to serve our students. So the total cuts and adjustments at this point, and, and the board took the first reading on this budget tonight, our total cuts and adjustments now are at four forty-two oh twenty-eight point eighty-nine. So when you go back to the next draft of our summary and revenue sheet, this, this is our current draft summary and revenue sheet, you'll see that top line again, next to last column. The total request is seventeen million, thirty-nine, one fourteen point forty-six, which represents a point nine four percent increase over the total request from last year. However, when you look at our revenues that will go towards this request, you'll see that our state subsidy, we did very well with state subsidy this year. We were one of the school districts that, that didn't get hurt like many others because we didn't lose that many students to homeschooling. So our state subsidy, we did, we did well with the adjustments that were made. That's not to say that we're gonna do this well again next year, but we did well this year. So when you look at the state subsidy, and you look at the other revenues that are in that next to last column, and I know I'm walking through this quickly with you, but you, we talked about this the other day. If you go down to the next to last, where it says total state and school revenues, which is the yellow highlight, those are our revenues that we can apply towards this total request of the budget. If you subtract that line, revenue line, from the total request, you end up with the bottom number, which is the tax appropriation for K-12, which is what we would be asking the locals for tax increase. And you can see that that amount is eight million, three forty-three, six fourteen point fourteen, or a minus point two one percent over last year. So we are actually seventeen thousand, nine hundred and eight dollars and forty-five cents less than what we asked for last year for the local, on the local side, which means we're less than flat funded on the local side for this particular budget. Entertain any questions that you might have. This is kind of another way of looking at it. This is another summary look at it. Our total expenditure request, which is right there that you can see, the total state and school revenues, tax appropriation compared to last year, what the difference is for the locals in terms of what that means for the local taxes.
So, Peter. What you're saying is, twenty, twenty-one and twenty-two, you're looking at is that eight million, three hundred and forty-three thousand, five hundred and fourteen dollars from us?
That's eight million, three forty-three, six fourteen point fourteen would be yes this year. Yeah, that's the tax appropriated local, right?
So.
Which is a decrease from that year.
Now, could we cut the local share by mil, by a hundred, a hundred fifty thousand? That should not affect you. Because last year, you had eight million, eight hundred and something thousand.
Has to be eight million, three hundred and sixty-one thousand.
Okay.
Twenty-two, it was less.
Less.
I mean, more, it was more.
It's more.
Seventeen thousand, nine hundred.
Can you, can you back, man, and put the other sheet up, please, from last year, so we can see? Jerry, last year. Last year, the request was, those, it was on the local side. It ended up being three hundred and fifty-three thousand, oh fifty-eight, twenty. What we're saying this year is that we're coming in flat. That's, that's gone.
Right.
We're actually coming in less than flat.
Peter, this is Ray Karen. From, from the last session that you gave us the number till right now, this session here, how much did you decrease it? How much was it a decrease from the last budget number you submitted until tonight?
How much does it decrease?
How much decreased?
The last time that we.
How much decreased?
The last time that we spoke. So if you look at this sheet that's on the screen right now.
Yep.
The last, the last time that we spoke, we were looking at an increase of a hundred and thirty-eight thousand, eight fifty-five, eighty-eight to the locals.
Yeah.
Which is a one point six six percent.
Yep.
Tonight, we're looking at a minus point two one percent, or seventeen thousand, nine hundred and eight dollars and forty-five cents less than what we asked for last time we spoke.
Yeah.
You are at less than flat funded on the local side, and we cut that, we cut that hundred and thirty-eight out again.
About point two mil rate, that's what, quite true that savings.
And that's a negative number, point, negative point two one, not positive. All right, all right.
Yep.
Peter, that's very unusual. Usually.
We know, Jerry.
But I thank you.
You're very welcome.
Does anybody have any, any other further discussions on?
Well, how does that affect?
Can I make a comment?
Yeah, go ahead.
Peter, this is Peter Grappo speaking.
Hi, Peter.
Hi, sir. I'm new on the council, obviously, and I had a lot of time this year to dissect and, and look over the municipal side of this budget. I didn't have so much time to, to look over the, the school side of this budget. What I wanna say tonight is I wanna thank you for your hard work. I'm, I'm more than impressed with the amount of money you have saved in, in these problem times we're having. I just wanna say thank you and keep up the good work.
Peter, I really appreciate those comments, and, and I wanna extend those, that thanks to my administrative team and, and the school board, and actually, the MEA, the association, and the teachers. We've all worked extremely hard to bring you a budget that was, that was based on what we felt were needs and, and not things that were, as I, some people might say, a wish list. These are based on needs because we all understand that we're in difficult times. We, we truly felt that everybody needed to work together on this.
Well, again, thank.
I, I appreciate your comment. Thank you very much.
And thank you very much.
So obviously, the order that we have in front of us will change according to those numbers.
Why?
Well, it'll be less, we've allocated so much for the, for the schools, so we're looking at reducing that amount by, looks like about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
Let's keep that right in the budget going forward. We've got contract negotiations. We've got all kinds of things coming at us right in the forehead next year. I'm not in favor of cutting that figure. We've talked about it, we've agreed on it, and if we have a savings from Mr. Tibutat, I think that's wonderful. Let's use it, put it in some capital account, so when something comes at us next year, Ray, we have some money. That's my opinion.
Can we hold until tomorrow to vote on the budget? I'm not saying we should.
What are you saying, then? Are you not saying we should?
Basically, the what I'm saying.
Can we? Can we?
Can we?
Can we? I, I'm not sure we can.
I mean, we had the public hearing on the budget. That was the part that had to happen tonight because you published it. The vote, yes, you could table it, unless I'm wrong, Bill Lee can let me know, but unless I'm wrong, yes, you could table it like you have the other items, until you have time to digest it. I, just for, food for thought, just to put it out there. So what we were going to be doing before school's adjustments was, the increase to two mils, increase two mils would have put an additional two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars in fund balance. So if I, if I take that number out, that was based on having a required increase of one point six two, I believe, without putting anything into fund balance. So if I were to look at it, now we're down to an increase of one point three six mils to balance, and then whatever you wanted to put on to make sure that we're covered. So, we were going from one point six two up to two.
Two.
If you still wanted to go with two, that's certainly the council's discretion. I'm just trying to give you what the numbers are. If we left it where it was at two mils, that would give us, I'll put this in right here. If you left it where it was at a two mil increase with Peter's numbers, that's an additional hundred and fifty-seven thousand, seven hundred and thirty-four dollars that would go back to fund balance.
Or put it, put it in a, I mean, again, the Moody's ratings and the S and P ratings, we've gotten negative ratings from them and lost points because of continual withdrawals from fund balance.
Correct, but if you wanted to vote to put more into capital, we would have to go back and rework our entire capital budget.
Okay, all right.
Can we?
As long as we can achieve that goal in fund balance, I don't think it's gonna matter if there's small.
Can we have an undesignated fund? On top of?
Well, you've got an undesignated fund balance. I guess I need to know exactly what you, you've got a contingency.
We've got, we've got a contingency, which we bottomed out basically. We have our, oh, our four million dollar goal. We have that account. Do we have any undesignated fund we can put those monies in, in a holding pattern?
Not really, the best thing would be to put it in.
So that, that way, we don't have to take it out of fund balance and have the issues that we're having.
No, but I think if we leave it, if.
You leave it in fund balance because it's there until you need it. Should you have a surprise issue happen where you needed to spend it, then you would be able to draw on it. You can always do a mid-year appropriation if you have to.
I mean, as, as Peter said, we've got fire, public works, and the schools all doing contracts this year, which are gonna be in next year's budget. That hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars isn't gonna last long.
Hundred and fifty, close to a hundred and thirty-eight.
Hundred and fifty-eight thousand isn't gonna be that long.
It's not, but what I'm saying is, you still have, you were, you were gonna be putting an additional two hundred and sixty-five thousand in.
No, no, I'm, I'm just saying, I'm, I'm just, I'm just looking at as a whole. That hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars that we're saying, that Mr. Tibutat has saved, saved the town this year is gonna get eaten up next year in his contracts alone.
So you wanna set it aside for school negotiations?
No, I'm, I'm not saying that. I'm just saying, we need to have that money available.
Well, the money's available if it's in fund balance, but because your magic number is still your magic number when you're looking at that sixteen point six, seven percent. If you are over that number in your fund balance.
Then it doesn't matter.
Then it, you don't get.
Okay, that's where I, that's where I was going with it.
Yes, then it doesn't matter.
If you take.
If you achieve that goal, no matter what you put in over and above that.
I just, just get me along with it.
Sorry, I was trying, what I was trying to say was, you're still putting that two sixty-five in there, plus the Orion money, so you've still achieved what you hoped to achieve.
So as long as we don't go down below the sixteen point, whatever percent.
Yeah, that, that's your magic number for your AAA.
Sixteen, six up.
So any withdrawals we take above that doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter.
Doesn't hurt us on the S and P.
They specifically, they specifically said, and, and what Erica sent me, was continually taking from fund balance to balance the budget.
Right.
Okay? If you have an issue, then you pull out of it. And again, if you've reached that benchmark, it doesn't matter. It doesn't matter, correct?
And that's what, that's what I wanna make sure we're safe on that portion.
Okay.
Yeah, now that's what we're talking about.
So it, it's up to you guys how you wanna go, that if you're thinking you need to still maintain that two mil tax increase, then you're looking at the, approximately an additional one hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars. Or, you know, if you wanted to do something else as far as the tax rate, that's up, that's up to you all. That's your call.
There's, Peter has a proposal right now, is to keep the tax rate at, at two, two mils, you know? And I can appreciate, and I can, I can understand that thing. We just gotta, you know, we just got a hundred and fifty thousand here of savings. It's just, my opinion is that we apply that to a reduction of the mil rate. We have done due diligence and replenishing fund balance this year, replenishing some, putting money into capital, plus we got a stimulus perhaps of about seven hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars.
Which we haven't seen a dime of.
We have not seen a dime of, and that's.
If we start seeing it, it's gonna be a two-year program.
All I'm saying is, is it's just, my opinion is that we apply that to the mil rate for some type of little bit of a tax. But I know it's not much. It comes to about a point one.
Twenty-four cents, basically, if we're.
Right, so point two, something like that, or?
Yeah, it's, it's.
I know it's symbolic. I know it's not a lot of money. It's just. So we, we, did you, so right now, we have, is this, does this number change? Does this twenty-six, five eighty-six, ninety-two will change? It won't change, right?
It goes down to twenty-six, four forty, one sixty.
Even if we keep the mil rate at two?
Well, yeah, because that's your appropriation. That doesn't.
Right, 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 okay.
I mean, your mil rate goes up or down. That's your total appropriation. So yes, that has dropped. Your total revenue has stayed the same, but overall, that would mean that you needed less money to balance.
Yeah.
But again, you're, you're trying to head off your future increases, so.
So right now, we have a.
If we leave it, what if we leave it alone, Ray, and we come up with at least the thought process going forward, that we may not have to touch it at all next year? Because if, if we drop it, if we drop it to two point, you know, we discussed it, the two point mil rate, we were probably gonna have to go up incrementally starting next year. So it's, it's again, it's, it's just a delay. That's all it is. I just think it would put the town in a much better position. We have expenses that we know will come in at us.
Yeah.
We can disc, uh.
What's that?
Do a discussion, more of a discussion tomorrow.
Well.
While we think about it.
I kinda like, would like to vote on it to, I mean.
I, I'd like to just get it out of the way, to be honest with you.
Yeah, I would, yeah.
I, I think.
We, we beat this thing to death.
Yeah, I mean.
For months now.
We're, we're not talking of, I don't think anybody's gonna change their mind after this, so. Right now, if, is there any further discussion, Jerry or Lee? Anybody has any further discussion on the budget, so?
So does Jerry have a motion? First of all.
I, I don't believe so. He, no one has a motion right now. Does anybody wanna make a motion?
I'll make a motion to make a vote at, keep it at two.
Well, that's what's here now.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
So you don't have to make a motion for that, because if, if there's a change, we would have to do a motion.
But, but for the total, that budget.
Yeah?
We'll probably have to have a motion that changes it.
Nope.
No?
We're not, we're not changing anything.
We're not changing nothing.
So, then the school will get a hundred and fifty-two thousand.
No, fund balance. No, fund balance will...
Fund balance.
Fund balance is gonna get it.
Okay, I'll make sure.
Our fund balance, municipal side.
Municipal side. So, if there is no further discussion...
I need a second.
Second, for the motion, second, did you get that, Peter, and then seconded?
Got it.
So, let's go in order, providing for approval of the Town of Winslow, two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two fiscal budget series in the amount of twenty-six, five ninety-six, nine twenty-four, to establish a tax due date and interest rates on taxes remaining unpaid. Lisa, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Peter Drappo?
Yes.
Uh, Jerry Quarian, Joseph Bravo?
Yes.
Jeff West?
Yes.
Lee Trahan?
Yes.
There he is, and Ray Karen?
Yes.
Six, zero, first reading.
Can somebody, I don't think the chair can make a motion to go in executive session.
I can motion to go on executive session.
Second.
Pursuant to thirty-six MRSAs subsection eight forty-one, two E, I'll read abatement discussion.
Thank you.
And a motion to the entrance, pursuant to one MS, MRSAs, subsection four five CC, discussion of real property, of real property or economic development, also, those are two things to go into executive session.
Before you can go into executive session, you gotta adjourn or regroup immediately.
No, uh, yes, we have to adjourn, well, we have to come back, no.
We have to come back to the regrouping.
We don't adjourn, we go in executive session, then we come out of executive session, and then we adjourn after that. That's always the way we've done, is that correct, Bill?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Peter.
So we are now going into executive session, thank...